Dealing with the ordinance to raise the revenue and adopt our budget, the City of Isle of Palms for the fiscal year July 1st, 2011 through 2012, June 30th. With that note, I'll open the public hearing and first ask Linda to really summarize where we are in the budget and the highlights, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is on the pink version of the budget, and if anyone's out there that doesn't have one, that needs one, there are some on the back table back there. And this version of the budget was advertised as it is required to be advertised in the post courier announcing this public hearing and detailing out some of the numbers that are in the budget. I'm going to just do highlights of the most important items in the budget. If anyone's got questions or concerns about any of the specifics, you know, be happy to try to answer those questions. First of all, there's no new personnel in this budget, and as in prior years, the city has made an allocation from the hospitality funds and the two accommodations funds to cover the tourism-related expenses associated with personnel in police, fire, and public works. This was something that we started with last year's budget, and we have moved that forward into this year, and that's some $468,000 of tourism-related funds going into the general fund to cover those expenses. Also included in this budget is a 3 percent pool for merit increases for employees that may deserve to get them. That doesn't mean that everyone automatically gets a 3 percent raise. It means that for those employees who have achieved to a certain level, they may be considered for whatever percentage raise they would deserve to get up to 3 percent or better if others are getting less than that. The city is changing from its current health plan to the state health plan. This budget shows a savings in accomplishing that of $67,000. We've estimated fuel expense in this budget at $4.25 per gallon. We don't know if that's a high number for the full year or a low number, but it's the best estimate that we could come up with for this version of the budget, so we will keep our fingers crossed as we go through the year that we have picked a good number to use and will be monitoring it throughout the year. The city council made the decision in this version of the budget to pay off some of the city's debt early. A municipal lease debt that we have on a 2009 Mack garbage truck will be paid off. That's $147,000, and it will save the city about $12,000 in interest expense in paying that off early. The budget also includes about $200,000 to finish the 53rd to 57th Avenue drainage project. That project is currently under construction, and we have allocated funds to complete the construction in FY '12. Additionally, on the same vein as drainage, we have allocated $86,000 to go towards design and permitting for the next phase of the drainage, which would be 46th Avenue to 52nd Avenue. And so we would try to get the planning and the works for doing a project there at some time in the future. There are two reserve funds that are being added to in this budget, just as they were in last year's budget. $150,000 towards the recreation ball field lights and renovation that's been targeted in our planning and the recreation department for a long time. Westy of SCE&amp;G would like to give us those lights for free. We'd be happy to take them and allocate that money elsewhere. Additionally, we've got $100,000 reserved for future beach restoration projects so that in the distant future, if we have to do some erosion mitigation projects in the future, we would have some funding allocated to do that. We have also put $600,000 in to be ready if we have to do our focused erosion project, which is a permit that is under consideration by OCRM at this time. We haven't gotten the permit yet, but we have also not met the triggers that are outlined in the permit that would cause us to need to go forward with doing that project. But we've allocated the money should we need to do it next year. And if you all will recall, this is money that the city received and we're holding that others have contributed towards this project. And then, last thing, we have budgeted to accomplish the dredging of the Isle of Palms Marina. The planning for that has been in the works now for a couple of years, and we expect to accomplish it in the fall of this budget year. And we're doing all of that with no increase in taxes. The millage will remain the same under this budget, and so we're very fortunate to be able to accomplish all these things with existing revenues coming in and also with some fund balance from some of our tourism funds, which have been healthy, and those revenues have been exceeding what we anticipated. I want to make one note about the budget and tonight's process. This version of the budget was slated for second reading tonight. We are asking that second reading be deferred on this version of the budget tonight and postponed until June. In the last couple of weeks, this version of the budget had anticipated doing some design and permitting work on a future beach access parking endeavor. In the last couple of weeks, council has made the decision that they would like to do more than design in the upcoming year, and we will be moving forward with one segment of the actual beach access parking endeavor. So we will be anticipating the mayor calling a special ways and means meeting so that we can review where those elements will impact on the budget, develop another version of it, and these things have all been in the process the last couple of weeks. We will re-advertise, we will hold another public hearing, and have another version of the budget for second reading in June. The good news is, though, that that will not change the millage or the tax situation on the budget. It's just a matter of adjusting some of the fund balance expenditures on the tourism funds.
Very good. Excellent. And I'd like to commend the staff and yourself for the diligent work over the last five months. Well, I think back at least five months.
February.
Yeah, four months. You know, it's almost been a daily grind for some folks getting through this budgeting process, so hopefully we'll get it over with, if not tonight, next month. So I'll open it up now for any citizens and public wish to comment. Okay, I don't see a ground swell. So I'll close the public hearing, and we'll convene the city council meeting in seven minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your patience. It's now seven o'clock. I'll call the city council meeting to order here in the City of Isle of Palms on a beautiful spring day, although it feels like summer outside. Seven o'clock, May 24th. I'd like to acknowledge that the press and public have been duly notified. I'd like to start with an invocation, pledge of allegiance, and roll call, so please advise for invocation. Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, as we begin our work tonight, I ask that you remember all those that came before us, our families, our friends, and those that serve our country, so that we may live in this wonderful city. I also ask tonight that you keep in your hands Marie Copeland and Ralph Peening, who's not with us tonight, but his brother, both of whom have had an operation, serious operations today. Please guide us as we enter this Memorial Day weekend. Help us enjoy the season. Help those that visit us return to their homes safely. And please keep in mind that there are others in this country not as fortunate as we who have suffered a horrendous tornado in the tornado season in the Midwest. Please help them recover as quickly as possible. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call will be your duty.
Councilmember Bergwirth?
Here.
Councilmember Gritelli?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Councilmember Duffy?
Councilmember Loftus?
Here.
Councilmember Peening?
Councilmember Stone?
President?
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Cronin?
President?
Administrator Tucker?
Here.
Attorney Culverson?
Here.
Thank you very much. We are missing three tonight, all on due cause. Ralph, as I indicated, is attending to his brother who's having surgery, had surgery today. Ryan, who's doing Peter Pan, and really can't get away from his critical role in that endeavor. And Brian has not returned from Italy, so he'll probably be speaking Italian by the time he comes back to us here. Look forward to all of their return here shortly. So moving on, I'd like to have a reading of the journal of the previous meetings. We have before you the public hearing of April 26th, the regular meeting of April 26th, and the joint meeting with the planning commission on May 11th. We have a motion to approve, amend, or...
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Unheard? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? No nays? Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' comments, I would like to amend the agenda tonight, if you'd allow me. Under miscellaneous, we had a proclamation for a National Safe Boating Week. I'd like to move that up on the agenda under citizens' comments right now, if I could.
Make that a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to acknowledge in the audience here, and he stands out because he's wearing his uniform, Ron Foreman from the Coast Guard Auxiliary, who's here to make sure we don't slip up on any of this activity. We appreciate your time on the water, and we want everybody else to be safe while they're out there also, so thank you very much. I'm going to ask Linda to read the proclamation so we can move it forward.
A proclamation in support of National Safe Boating Week. Whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and the citizens and visitors of the Isle of Palms are fortunate that we have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. And whereas at times our waterways can become crowded and boating to the unprepared can be a risky activity. And whereas not knowing or obeying the navigation rules or the nautical rules of the road or drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat or choosing not to wear life jackets are examples of human error or a lack of proper judgment. And whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately 70 percent of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. So therefore, be it proclaimed on this day, May 24th, 2011, that mayor and city council of the City of Isle of Palms, on behalf of the city, do urge all those who vote to wear a life jacket and practice safe boating habits. Dick Cronin, Mayor.
We have a proclamation, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, done deal. I like this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming out, and we'll probably see you on the waters this weekend, I suspect.
Well, hopefully in a safe way, and wish to thank our chief for all her support that she's been giving us also. And we hope that none of your voters will have any accidents this year. And life jackets, I know I don't want to say too much, but the other thing we'd like to get people to use are these perps. They're personal notification devices, so if something happens, you pop them, someone attendant finds you. Just in the paper, there were three people saved down off the hillside, holding on to a water cooler, and the reason why they were saved is because of one of these perps.
Okay, not to be a salesman, but where do you buy those?
West Marine. Any of the marine stores have them. You buy them online, save, you know, 50 bucks, but West Marine carries various versions of it.
And so 50 bucks will get you a... Use it?
About $350 at the marine store.
$350. Ah, okay.
And you can use them on shore, too. You can go up in the mountains, they'll still work. It works the satellite, and it also ties into Rescue 21 for the Coast Guard.
Wonderful.
On behalf of the Coast Guard DNR and your local law enforcement, we hope everybody does have safe boating. We appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for your time. Very good. Excellent. Moving back to our citizens' comments, items on the agenda. We had originally been requested by Warehouse Films LLC to... That they had been approached by them that they were going to be seeking an authorization to film on the beach, but they have pulled that request, so we don't have to deal with it. Next on the hit parade, Westy Westmoreland is with us. He's going to spellbind us with all of the work that South Carolina Electric Gas is doing on the island, a particular project that's going to be underway here back by City Hall in the substation. So why don't you step to the mic so everybody can hear you? As I was telling Westy just a few moments ago, there are people on the west end of the island don't know what's happening utility-wise on the east end of the island and vice versa. And he's working everywhere, so...
That's right.
Tell us what's going on.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate you all inviting me to speak to you tonight. We've actually got several projects on the agenda or in the works at the moment in addition to our regular operations and maintenance. First of all, being we're doing some new switches that can be remotely controlled in the event of outages. And where that's an advantage to the residents of Isle of Palms is the fact that we can restore power to parts of our circuits without... Before the truck arrives, so we can open and close switches to pick up somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 customers before we actually have trucks over here that will be repairing the actual problem area. So that's going to be an advantage to both us and the residents for higher reliability of electric service. With that is a requirement that we upgrade two of our switches to automated switches. Those will be on 30th Avenue and 42nd. You probably will not notice much of a difference between the visual look of those switches and what was there previously. The other requirement is that we install a pole on 13th near our substation that will communicate with those... Will allow us to communicate with those switches on 30th and 42nd. That pole will be approximately 20 inches in diameter, and it's made of steel, self-supporting with no guy... Guying structures, and it will be right next to our substation, adjacent to 13th Avenue. So that is the first project that I wanted to mention. The second one is that we're finishing up Phase 3 of 3 of Forest Trails. We've undergrounded a good section of that. Reason for that is access to our overhead poles have become extremely difficult with their location and the development. So that allowed us, again, to improve reliability and upgrade our system is to place those facilities underground where we could access them in a more expedient manner. So that will be continuing probably through this year, and then we'll be finalizing that probably by the end of this year in Forest Trails. We're also continuing to work on another project, undergrounding the area of 4th through 8th or parts of those areas. Again, access... The overhead line had been designed between the backyards of the lots there, becoming with fences and growth very difficult to access, so we have redesigned that to be an underground system that we can access. Part of the reason of the undergrounding is the fact that we're going from a different voltage, and the underground allows us to be less susceptible to periodic salt contamination that we were talking about earlier, which can cause problems. In the right weather conditions, salt can form on the wires, which causes... Which can cause tracking and outages, so... The last project I wanted to mention, it's in design. We're still trying to... We're still working on the design is to replace the Isle of Palms to Dewey's Island line. We're looking at an underground design and seeing about the feasibility of that. Not sure on the timeframe of that, when the design will be this year, but we may be looking at construction next year on that if we can make it... Make the numbers work, make the project work. What we've looked at is overhead versus underground replacement, and because of the location and nature of that, underground potentially could be a viable option there for that crossing. That was... Those are really the four major projects that I can think about. You know, we are, of course, continuing to provide service to the residents of Isle of Palms and enjoy doing so, so...
As long as we pay our bills.
That's right. You can pay mine, too, if you...
I have a couple of questions. You're going under Dewey's? That's one of your...
Well, that's what we're looking at.
There's a 30-foot channel in there. You're going...
Yeah, we'll do it by directional bore. Be a quite larger rig than we typically use for like what we're doing on Forest Trails. But that technology has advanced to a level and become more cost competitive in that way. A lot of the issue is just the location and the size of an overhead line. Those installation and using marine contractors is not an inexpensive proposition, so it's not like overhead on land, which is typically... Which is a lot more cost-effective. It becomes a lot closer in cost, surprisingly.
And your new switches, 30th and 42nd, the pole you're putting back here, what's the height?
It'll be about 100 feet tall.
Okay. I knew that, but I wanted you to say it.
I left that out in my presentation.
But that's a single self-sustaining...
Single self-sustaining, and you know, it'll be considerably smaller than the transmission poles that are located at the end of the... At the end of 13th Avenue and within the substation. The other thing is it may not be a permanent installation, and maybe at some point where we're able to relocate that antenna.
Any other questions? I mean, I can go on for hours. This is my sweet spot here.
Westy, the pole won't be that orange color of the poles in Mount Pleasant, will it?
No.
It's going to be consistent with the color of the poles that are there already?
It would be, and I probably need to get exactly what the color would be to you, but it'd be more of a galvanized, kind of a duller metal material.
But not the red, Westy?
Exactly.
That's Corten steel on Coleman?
That's right. That's exactly what it is. Which will... It'll be interesting to see in about a year, you'll take a look at it, because it does change to a different color over about a year, and then it stays consistent after that, so...
I had a personal... I don't think it gets better after a year. It may change, but it doesn't get better.
Well, that's true.
You're in the third phase of Forest Trail. That's a significant... People don't realize, this has been almost a three-year effort now.
That's right. Absolutely.
And the first two phases were rather significant as far as the territory and undergrounding that was involved.
Yeah, it involved considerable number of blocks. I can't remember off the top of my head exactly the number of blocks. Project cost somewhere in the neighborhood of, for all three phases, will be probably $600,000.
And the other things for... I know some people here are interested in reliability on the far end of the island. You split the substation into three circuits instead of two, or...
Well, that's a good point. How did I... Yeah, I'm kind of thinking forward, and I'll be looking at what we've just completed, but we are... We have previously been three circuits feeding the residents, and now we will be four circuits. And what that does is, of course, improves the reliability by spreading those customers off a number of circuits. And the main purpose of that is a considerable amount of our load is in the 41st... I call it north, but it may be west.
East.
East, I should say. But so what we were able to do by taking some of the load off of the area between 13th and 41st, if we lose the feed to that 41st North area, we can tie that without having to risk under peak conditions not being able to carry those load conditions. So that is something that we're really excited about, and we've got a good bit of that already completed, so...
So that's part of the work you've seen them...
That's right.
...blowing around here and across over behind me in red and white, et cetera. That's to increase the... Establish the fourth circuit, put load on it, take it off of whatever circuits.
Right.
13th to 41st, and then give you the flexibility of moving some of the wildness load in the event that there's a disruption, so...
That's exactly right. It's something that as the load has continued to grow and the customers have continued to grow, you know, we've... With so much of that being the furthest point from the substation, you know, we're all... We're thinking about reliability, and that's the way to further ensure that we've got reliability, as I said, during peak conditions like Easter and summer type.
Like this weekend.
Like today, 90-something degrees, and then this weekend, exactly. So, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other concerns?
Is the fourth circuit work done?
It is... It's probably about 80 percent done, so, you know, we've got a good bit of it, which is what we routed the new circuit around the city property over to cross the connector and rebuilt the line around the shopping center. So we're still working on J.C. Long and Pavilion and some of those other areas. That's going to be the finished line for us on that project, so...
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Next, we're going to hear a presentation from Jack Mitchell from Regional Director of AT&amp;T. He's come to spellbind us with his new whiz-bang video.
Good evening. Does everybody have a copy of the presentation?
They were given a copy, but it's been a couple of weeks ago, I think. Everybody got a copy in their box.
If anybody has one, they can...
Marty's sleeping.
Marty's sleeping up again.
I got mine early.
Okay, are we good?
Let's give him a few minutes.
All right.
I got one here.
We'll look.
Oh, no, no. I have a plan.
I'll light one to you, please.
Thank you.
We'll give you one of these. I've got one here somewhere.
Well, good evening. My name is Jack Mitchell. I'm a regional director for external affairs for AT&amp;T. Many of you may have known my predecessor, Ted Kreech. I'm the new Ted. Been here about two years. We have a wonderful product that we're trying to bring into the Low Country. It's called U-verse. It is cable TV through your phone line. That's kind of it in a nutshell. It will look and feel and taste a lot like, you know, DirecTV Comcast technology, but there are some significant differences to it, and there's some technical aspects that require a consent from the council to approve our ability to bring this in and deliver it to your constituents. While it may look and feel like cable in a lot of ways, it's a new technology based on Internet protocol. And what that means is that your TV set in your house has its own IP address, just like your telephone might or your computer. So we can deliver the signal to any TV in the house instead of all at once to all the TVs. And it has some unique aspects to it. For example, while we've deployed it about four years ago in other parts of the country, and we're just bringing it to the Charleston area, I can tell you that it's extremely robust. And what we can do with it is, for example, while with Comcast or DirecTV, you can record two things at once, with our product, you can record four things at once, three of which can be high definition. And you can watch... We were the first company to allow you to watch it on any... Whatever you've recorded, to watch it on any TV in the house. So you haven't... You're not anchored to the TV in your house that has the TiVo box or DVR. You can watch it on any room in the house. You can also take it, and if you want, you can move it to your smartphone and watch it on your telephone, just as long as you're not driving or voting, I'm sure.
Or exciting.
People don't listen.
But so that's one advantage. We... You know, if you have a smartphone like an iPhone or BlackBerry, you can get an app and you can... If you forget to record a basketball game or a show, you can go, oops, go into your U-verse app and record it that way, so... Or you can delete a program because you're tired of seeing it already. What else can you do? It has another number of unique aspects to it. For example, we have a relationship with an online photo company called Flickr, and you can upload photographs from a trip or from your granddaughter's birthday or whatever. And what would have been like a five-by-seven glossy on your mantle is now big on the And then what would have been like a five-by-seven glossy on your mantle is now big on the big screen in high definition. So, you can do a whole screen show. It's got something called AT&amp;T U-Bar and this is a personalization of the content that you receive. Let's say you've got a stock portfolio and you're really interested in your stocks because stocks are starting to do better. You can just load the stocks that you want to see and have those scroll across your TV set. Also, if you have a sports team, those of us who went to Syracuse, we love the Orangemen, I can just load the Orangemen and watch, you know, men or women's lacrosse, basketball, hockey, whatever, and then see those scores. Not that Ala Palm isn't a thriving metropolis, but let's say you lived in LA, Chicago, New York, Washington, and you had to get up in the morning and fight traffic to get to work. Well, by putting in your zip code, you can see what the traffic flow would be like through your community. It has some other advantages. Let's say you're gonna be going to Atlanta next week and you want to know what the weather's gonna be like. You can go to the weather section, put Atlanta's zip code into the TV and you can, it'll pop up for you. Because it's tied to the telephone system, if you are so inclined and want a really relaxing afternoon watching a game on your TV with your friends and you get hungry, you can just go to our Yellow Pages that are on the telephone, on the television, order pizza, have it ring from the TV set and then pick up your phone and order the pizza. They will, you actually have to get up and go get the pizza when it's delivered, but everything else will be done for you by the comfort of your home, of your seat, rather. So, it's got, you can't do that with anybody else and it really is quite unique. And, but I said there's some technical issues and issues not in the pejorative term. I mean, it's a good thing. In order for us to deploy this to your constituents, we need to bring in a franchise agreement. And we're asking that you sign the consent and allow us to deploy the technology. Along with that, we've already deployed, as I've been told by my construction and engineering folks, fiber optics throughout the town. We've been stringing it for the last three years all through your community. And so, now what we have to do is, is bring the video signal to another cabinet, which will then send it to the other cabinet that you already see on the street that says, "This is Mr. Johnson's house," and it'll connect the video signal to the phone signal to get it and deliver the content to that house. Trying to think if I've forgotten anything else. You'll get an automatic boost in your DSL speed. If you currently get like eight megabit of DSL, you can get 24 megabit, which is faster than cable and it's dedicated, so you'll constantly get that bandwidth. It won't fluctuate like with cable. Trying to think, what else? I always forget something. Well, if you open to the first page, go to your, to your left side, "How U-verse TV is Delivered." This is really the technical aspect of how it's delivered. And you'll notice it says IP Video Super Hub. Well, that's in Kansas, so you haven't got to worry about approving that. The IP Video Hub is in North, yeah, that's in North...
It's not in tornado land, is it?
I hope not. The IP Video Hub offices, those are in North Charleston. We've taken one of our central offices and dedicated it to bring in the video signal. The central office, I don't know if there's a central office on Ala Palms or if it's over in Mount Pleasant.
Dear Paul.
Okay. Thank you. See, I should know this.
We have a technical expert.
I should know this. Okay. So, for you folks, the signal will start in that central office and it's routed via one of two transports, either copper, which is the old, you know, old Pots Plano television, telephone service, or modern fiber. And that'll deliver it to the node and the node is that box I was telling you about that'll connect to the cross-connect box, which is that green tall box that has all the wires in it. So, that's it in a nutshell. And you'll notice that once it, once it's delivered to your house, you have a gateway and the gateway will serve as your dial tone for your house. It'll turn, it'll serve as your DSL and it'll serve as your video signal. So, one box, and I'll admit, my old two-wire box was that big, my gateway is this big. Okay? But they put the gateway all the way into my garage, so I'm not even seeing it now, which is really great. I mean, because it comes complete with a wireless network for your whole house. So, you can, and bandwidth is really good. My dock is about 95 feet from my back door and I get five bars when I'm sitting on my dock doing my work on my computer. So, it's pretty powerful. It's pretty good. The rest of this talks about IPTV. That's Internet Protocol. That's what I was talking about. That's what we're talking about when we respect to, Internet Protocol is the, is the address that your computer has. Your telephones, I mean, your televisions will now have their own IP address. So, the signal knows where to go. And because the delivery is, it's not all content shoved into your house at once, but what you select, when you change the channel from channel five to channel 20, it is instantaneous. And again, that's because of the technology that will allow us to do that. And the rest on the right side is basically, just to give you an idea of, you know, kind of what we can do with it. We have a sports multiview and a news multiview. If you are a real sports nut, you can go and put like just ESPN, Fox Sport Net, all on one site and watch like five games at once, if you really need to do that. We also have that for news. You can do CNN, MSNBC and Fox and get a really well-balanced news show if you want. And so, and then it talks a little bit about U-Bar, which is what I just talked about. You'll see weather, stocks, sports, traffic. Even if you're a fantasy football person, you got a fantasy, if you're in a fantasy league, you can do your fantasy team on your U-Bar. So, you can find out how you're scoring or not scoring on your Sunday football game. So, it's, it really is kind of cool. So, any questions?
Well, it sounds very powerful. I mean, it's got all the elements that, as you indicated before, that's available, plus some other features that I've not heard of yet. What makes it so unique that others can't do the same thing?
The technology, you know, most cable is married to coax, which has real bandwidth limitations. The only other company that's doing this is Verizon in their territory and that's called FiOS. It's very similar. They're building it out much differently than we are. DirecTV and Dish Network, again, have a bandwidth issue. We've been using, if you, any of you are AT&amp;T customers or Bell South customers, you'll notice that we will market DirecTV for you. We don't, it's their product. We market it. We have an arrangement with them. And they started doing the Total Home DVR. In other words, you can pause it in the middle of the show and go to another room. They got that from us and they had to, when I had DirecTV, they had to re-spin the video signal around so they can get to the other boxes in my house. So, it's not Internet Protocol-based, which is pretty modern. So...
Well, it's moving very fast. All I know is my grandkids who are visiting, the five-year-old, I think she's gone further ahead than her grandmother technology-wise already, so I can't imagine where this stuff is going. Barb's over there, she's got her iPad. Not operating, but she lives with it, I think.
I'm jealous. I haven't got one yet.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Anybody have any other questions?
I just want you to speak to two quick things because I know that they're important over here and that is reliability and storm conditions. And I don't necessarily mean devastating conditions, but sometimes when we get bad storms over here, just bad thunderstorms, Direc and Dish and some of those, they don't work. In other words, you can't even get the Weather Channel to find out what's happening to you. What has been the reliability experience of this product?
Well, I'll say that 2008, 2009, 2010, it won JD Power's Best Cable Service for three years running. DSL, generally speaking, has a much, much better reliability than cable. We've mostly undergrounded everything, which prevents much of Mother Nature's wrath from disturbing it. So, in that regard, our DSL service rarely goes down. And with the increased bandwidth, that's gonna actually help. I would, in line with safety, I would say to you and tell your residents that if we have a hurricane this summer, stress to your residents on your website, do not make phone calls to find out if everything is okay. Text. Because bandwidth use for a phone call is much more than the bandwidth used for a text message. And you can take that one step further. If you have local phone service at your house or at your business, go to an antique store, to a goodwill, anywhere, and find an Old Princess phone. Because we use a different version of electricity. We don't use AC current, we use DC current. And the phones never go down. You never, you know, I was in California, I lived through, I have no idea how many earthquakes, including the big Northridge quake. The phone systems don't go down because we don't, we're not using the same power source. And the modern phones, you have to plug them in to make the voicemail systems work and all that. The Old Princess phone, it uses direct current right from the phone company and it'll always be there. So, keep it in the closet. When there is a hurricane, pull it out, unplug your modern phone, plug the Old Princess phone in and you can, you can communicate with anybody.
After you go, I had phone service all through the rebuilding, never lost it.
Yeah.
And a Princess phone to go with it.
Was it pink?
It was light blue.
I have a green, I should. Princess phone. We still have one. Probably the only phone we use. All right. Thank you very much.
If I may ask one question?
Yeah, please.
I know the deadline's coming up really soon. Secretary of State needs to get it, I think by 5th, 7th, something like that, in June. Are we on track?
Oh, yeah. We're on schedule.
Great. Then all I would ask is when it's signed, just let me know so I can get a copy of it. So, I gotta turn it in.
You're spinning this throughout the state or...
We're actually the last part of the state to get it. Columbia got it two years ago, Greenville got it last year and we're getting it this. We started, we deployed it in November of 2010. So...
Well, the next wave, we want to be first.
I hear you.
Just one more question and you may not know the answer to this. It has been stated by several council people present that adding a 3% or 5% usage fee, either you all collect it or we collect it in terms of our tax and the user, the end-user's bill. How do you all collect it if we don't take it from the residents?
You know, that's a great question. If you don't have a franchise fee that you want to charge your residents, then you don't have to. But if you put, you know, 3%, 4%, whatever, on that form that you sent back to the Secretary of State, then my understanding is a lot of cities are going to the municipal association. They will collect it and they will reimburse the local jurisdictions.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Good.
Thank you very much and I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you'll make your dock even yet tonight while the sun is still out. All right, moving on. Reports from standing committees. First one up is Ways and Means. We met on May 10th at 5:45 in the evening. We moved fairly quickly. I'll give you a rundown of our financial statements, which was presented to us from our treasurer on a monthly basis. Our revenue projections are in line. We're at 80% of budget, but we are at 99% of where we were last year, so we're basically on budget. Our expenditures are tracking below. Our target would be 83% being 10 months into the year and we're target, we're running at 75% of expenditures. So, we're well in stream on an expenditure basis and our treasurer, in response to a question, did indicate that she was comfortable that we'll meet our revenue budgets and obviously we're still under on expenditures, so things look good in those. And our general fund activities. In our tourism-related activities, our state accommodations tax continues at nine and a half percent above prior year. Municipal accommodations tax is 18% above prior year and our hospitality tax is 10% above prior year. So, in the past year, in particular last summer, which was the driving factor for most of our activity in tourism, is, was well ahead of prior periods. On our projects, as Linda indicated earlier, in our public hearing, the 53rd and 57th Street project is well underway and we'll deal with that here. Before us, we had a recommendation for, well, I'll come back to that because I'll do it in order of the agenda instead of how we dealt with it at the meeting. So, we dealt with, on our old business, or actually new business, well, on our old business, we had only reported that the accommodations tax advisory committee did unanimously pass the budget as proposed at a special meeting they held on May 4th. Under new business, we dealt with the fact that the recreation committee approved the expenditures $2,712.97 for the Berkeley Heating and Air Conditioning to replace the HVAC compressor in the Pilmetto Room. So, I'll make that in the form of a motion here. Have a second.
Second.
Motion seconded. This is a compressor that is obviously sorely needed in this need, if nothing else. So, any discussion on this? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also considered a recommendation, Ways and Means approved, recommended for council action, a change order number three on the Edes Construction. This is the project 53rd to 57th Avenue. This is a $12,000 change in line with the project proposal you'll find in your package. They found a water line where it wasn't previously identified on any of the design information or any of the sculpting from the service that goes out and finds these underground services. And so, to work around that particular element was a cost increase to the project of $12,000 and that was recommended by our engineer as the most cost-effective solution in that limited space right there by the outfall, the wear box on Racket Club Road. So, I make a motion to approve change order number three and the amount of $12,000 for the Edes Construction.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion on this? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Subsequent to the Ways and Means meeting, the Real Property Committee met and took up a subject that had been discussed earlier and that was ventilation at the, at the public restroom in the front beach. While it was discussed months prior, it came forward at this meeting, at our Real Property Committee meeting, that we need to, for this season, put in ventilation fans. And the recommendation coming from Real Property Committee to council now is to spend up to $3,500 to add ventilating fans in the front beach and public restroom. So, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion is seconded. It's not clear whether we'll have to spend all $3,500 because we had a gentleman in the present with us at the Real Property Committee said, "Hey," and he's a very competent and licensed contractor, he said, "I can do it for less." So, I'm assuming Donnie's working with that individual and hopefully we can bring it in for under $3,500. So, we need ventilation in the public restrooms. I don't think I need to explain why. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you very much. And the last item, again, from the Real Property Committee, and this has to do with the coastal science and engineering recommendation. As you know, in their project cost to us, they've had different silos, different cost expenditures and it's their recommendation that in order to meet their balancing activity, they would like to have $3,640 move from, I've lost track of my note as far as...
From the...
Oh, yeah, because I can't pronounce it among those things. They would like to reduce the photogrammetry, I didn't do that right, but reduce that budget by $3,640 and add it to Task Seven, Year Two item, increase that by $3,640, which creates a net change of zero, which is always good to hear. But that puts us, puts them in a good stead and keeps us on track. So, I'll make that motion that we make that real allocation within the, within the contract.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. As Linda indicated earlier, I will be calling here shortly a special meeting of Ways and Means to deal with the cost of the parking process that we're about. We'll probably do that maybe, well, I'm gonna meet with Linda and the staff later this week and we'll establish a date at that time because they have to finish their work. They've been diligently looking at all the details necessary to implement the direction that we've given them. So, we'll have a special Ways and Means meeting, so that's just an alert for you. It'll be early enough in June so that we can carry forward with the budget activity, have another public hearing and meet our obligations to have it concluded and have it advertised within the appropriate period. So, any questions on that? on that? We adjourned and agreed to meet next month, towards the end of the month, and I don't remember the date, but here it is, June 21st. So we'll actually have another meeting prior to that. Any questions? Moving on. Let's go on to Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Public Safety, I missed that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Tuesday, May 3rd. Under citizens' comments, we had a Chris McDonald set up events, proposed, or was thinking of proposing an event on the beach. And we pretty much told him that the city had a set number of events. This was a for-profit group, although some of the funds would have been going to a nonprofit agency. I was, our understanding was a very small percentage, and we did not support the event, and it was a busy time of the year for the beach. We once again reviewed the capital and operating budgets for the Fire and Police Departments, and talked about the need for the vote and other means by which we can do it, which the chief is proceeding with. Under new business, we discussed the command positions in the Police Department, and as a result of, at the last meeting, we approved the organizational chart and job descriptions, salary ranges as presented, and sent them to the Personnel Committee as was requested. And I would imagine the Personnel Committee is going to be asking us to approve those later on. Highlights of department reports. In the Police Department, underage drinking, we get a lot of that. Loud noises, we get some of those. We discuss logistics and responding to some of these things when they're actually rented by the owners, and the owners have somehow contracted with a rental agency to give out the keys, and we're, chief is going to be working with Building Department to streamline some of those procedures so we know who to contact first and when. Police Department report. Highlights, we received 5,092 calls in April of this year, and to put that in perspective, that's opposed to 2,400 calls we had last year. So, quite a, quite a busy month. In the Fire Department, Fire Department responded to an electrical short in a residence. They found an autistic child that was lost and found on the beach, actually waiting in the water, and someone was stranded in an elevator for, it sounded like, for a little bit longer than they may have wanted to have been stranded in that elevator, and got them out. The department responded, Fire Department responded to 71 calls, 38 of those calls were EMS. And Chief Graham announces the city received a grant for $8,000 for mobile data terminals, reducing our FY12 capital budget by that same amount. So, way to go. And we talked about the upcoming voting safety proclamation. Our next meeting date will be Tuesday, June 7th, 5:30. Right here. Any questions?
Any specific reason for the increased call activity? Just general?
Good, good, good weather. Hotter than normal this morning, and more of the Ways and Means.
Yeah, well, I can't remember last year, the same month. I thought it was good weather also.
It was much hotter, and the windows were closed, and air conditioners were running in May last year. April, sorry, into May.
Okay, okay.
Makes a big difference.
Okay. Any questions for Public Safety? Public Works. Do we have anybody to deliver?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I figured you weren't going to be here, so I'll take it.
All right.
The Public Works Committee meeting, Committee met at 4:00 PM on May 2nd, 2011. Public was duly informed. In attendance at the committee's members, Stone, Thomas, and Duffy, Assistant Administrator Zubin, Director Pitts, and City Clerk Copeland. The minutes of the previous meeting, April 7th, were unanimously approved. There were no citizens' comments. Department report, new yellow trashcans have been placed on the beach, and the beach sweeps have begun, with two in, in April at 4th and 25th. Repair to the Caterpillar used to pick up debris was also completed. Vehicle maintenance remains under budget and should remain under budget for the remainder of the fiscal year. Old business. Update on the drainage project. Installation from the back gate to the end of Beach Access on 56th, 57th should take approximately two weeks. The project is targeted to be complete at the end of June. Review the budgets. Budgets reflect council's approval to pay off the 2009 Mack truck on July 1st due to the savings in the general fund of the interest on the lease of $12,000. One beach walkover repair remains in the budget, but which one will yet, is yet to be decided. And under new business, work has begun on the bid package for a commercial waste hauling contract. The county will have creative recycling pickup e-waste when we have two-fold pallets at no cost to the city. There were no contracts in excess of $10,000. Our next meeting will be 4:00 PM Wednesday, June 8th, in Council Chambers.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Public Works?
Nope.
All right, moving on. Recreation Committee, please.
Recreation Committee met on May 4th. The committee took one more look at the FY11112 budget, and we're satisfied with our part of the budget. The spring production of Peter Pan has its performances this week, the 25th through the 28th, and if you don't have your tickets, I guess you're out of luck. It's sold out for all the performances. Many of the classes at the rec will take summer off and resume in the fall, but adult hip-hop and zumba will continue through the summer as long as attendance continues to be strong. And these are very energetic people that are coming all summer.
Yes.
Yeah. The last middle school dance of the year took place May 13th, and for the summer, the rec will have Camp Sunshine and We Camp, and they will also sponsor sports camps in baseball, basketball, volleyball, and lacrosse. Another big event coming up this Saturday at 9:00 AM is the sand sculpting contest. Last year, we had 65 teams participating. Coming up, the 23rd of July is the IOP Beach Run, and we've talked about the compressor going out in the Palmetto Room. Director Page put out a bid and has taken the lowest bidder, which we've talked about, $2,712.97. And this unit is crucial to the building, especially with the unusually warm weather and the upcoming performances of Peter Pan. Our next meeting is June 7th, 4:00 PM, here in the Council Chambers.
Excellent. I haven't checked the tides. Imagine sand sculpting, low tide.
9:00 AM.
Yeah, you'd get it under control, don't you?
You've got connections.
Nothing, nothing escapes. Excellent. I think I'm going to come down there, but I'm not going to sculpt this. You know, I don't want to steal the day.
[laughing]
Personnel Committee, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met at 5:45 PM, May 4th, 2011. The public and press were duly informed. In attendance were committee members Battelli, Peening, and Chair Thomas, Assistant Administrator Duzub, how do you pronounce your last name?
The first three letters make a J sound. You say Jubin.
Jubin, okay.
I've been wanting to ask you that for a long time.
Jubin. Chief Buchanan and the City Clerk Copeland. Minutes of the previous meeting, April 13th, were unanimously approved. There were no citizens' comments. Under old business, the old, the operating and capital budgets of the general government and building departments were discussed. The committee felt that the budget was good, and no further review was warranted, given that no changes were made since the last Ways and Means Committee meeting. Under new business, Chief Buchanan reviewed his proposed organizational change with the police, with the Police Department brought about by the retirement of Lieutenant Wright. Some of the highlights were the replacement of Lieutenant Wright with, with a captain of operations and a captain of support services, and redistribution of the staff as shown in the packet of our minutes. So I'm not going to, you all look at those on your own. The chief is recommending this reorganization to more evenly distribute the span of control. The chief has assured us that there will be no reduction in officers on the street. He also pointed out that this reorganization will not increase department headcount, and will have the same number of command layers and result in an annual savings of $14,000. The committee unanimously approved the proposed new command structure of the Police Department, the job descriptions, and the related salaries. The Safety Committee unanimously approved this proposal change in their May 3 meeting, and I would like to recommend that the City Council do the same, and I'd like to have a motion.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? I think everybody's had time to digest this. The details are rather explicit as far as what the structure has been and what it's going to be if this is approved. The operating duties of the individuals are clearly identified, and I think it's a good move as far as the Police Department is concerned, giving the span of control the right emphasis. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you, chief. It was good work.
Sweepstakes managers?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I have it printed out here, too.
Wait a minute, where are we at here? Okay, and I forgot to start, March Safety, I'll remember this one of these days. March Safety Sweepstakes Minutes, General Government, Amy Wilkerson; Police Department, Craig Thompson; Fire Department, Eric Stenit?
Stenit.
And Public Works, John Graham.
Excellent. Any questions for Personnel? None? Okay, let's move on to Real Property Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property met on Wednesday, May 11th, 8:30 AM. All members of the committee were present, and with the exception of Councilman Stone, who was excused. For citizen comments, Philip Smith addressed the committee about the sediment being, coming out of the drainage ditch along 41st Avenue, as far as the drainage, the drainage as far as the redoing the marina. And he requested the city take a hard look at that and see what could be done, because he feels his property's being negative impact by the sediment coming out of the drainage ditch. It was decided that Jack Walker from our GL Consulting would look into the area and come back to Real Property with a recommendation on, and study the issue in further detail. That will be followed up in the next meeting. On the beach restoration, basically, we already did that through Ways and Means, but a reallocation of funds was voted on and approved. On dredging, you know, Jack Walker talked about where it was done with the Army Corps of Engineers, and one of the things the Army Corps of Engineers doing is requesting in-kind services for various projects, and one thing that's come up that we were considering right now is stockpiling large amount of rocks that could be used for future projects. And this is a way to trade off services with the Army Corps of Engineers. So the committee decided to move forward and look at that as an option to satisfy the Army Corps of Engineers' request. The cost of that will be approximately close to $29,000. As far as also dredging, was discussed about the Morgan Creek Harbor Association participating in the project. It's been gone, it was noted by Council, I mean by Mayor Cronin, that Morgan Creek Harbor Association has a new board president, and discussions are moving forward to see if that is a possibility. We also talked about the, which was approved in Ways and Means, the, great, great meeting talking about restrooms, folks. Talking about the restroom fans, which was approved by City Council to move forward with that. We also discussed, and Douglas Kerr has been, has volunteered to take over the recognition of past council members, and looking at coming up with a program that could be done with that, considering possibly using bricks for that. And the meeting ended, and then Linda took us on a ghost tour of the old Building Department, and we walked through various parts and heard all about the, the building. And basically, you know, the building's not in very good shape, and we're looking at possibility of renting that space out, but it could be the cost to refurbish that space to make it usable may not be a good return on investment. So that's been discussed, and we'll have to bring that back for the committee further conversation with that. Another also discussion was tracking vehicles entering the city parking lots. It was suggested that we use a hard count number, some electronic means of counting those vehicles. Couple problems developed from that is, one is that once someone purchases a ticket, they can come in and out as many times as they want for that parking. And also, season pass holders will come and back, come back and go back and forth at freedom. So, no resolution was really decided with that, and that, that discussion was, nothing was decided at that time. I suggested possibility of looking at raising the daily rate for the parking lots to increase revenue for the city, and as a, throw that out for further consideration and tie that into the potential changes in our citywide parking plan. Next meeting for, is set for June 2nd at 8:30 AM in the upstairs Building Department Conference Room.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, none heard. Thank you all.
Upstairs Building Department Conference Room. Oh, thank you. It looks been right here.
We met over there then.
It's more intimate up there.
Yeah. Really nice space.
Okay, moving on. You've also received order to commission minutes from the accommodations tax and planning commission. Any questions, concerns?
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Obviously, parking is a, probably the most critical issue facing the island right now. I'd like to, Linda, could you give us an update, what's transpired since the joint meeting? I know you're looking at budgetary issues.
Yes, I'd be happy to. The very day after the meeting, because we were assigned an approach that really had not been contemplated in the budget, I called a meeting of several of the department managers, along with the City Treasurer and Assistant Zubin, and we discussed everything that had been discussed in the meeting and the assignment that was given. And I asked each of the members of the group that were together that day, gave them an individual assignment associated with implementation of what the group wanted to do, which basically is to implement the section of the parking management plan that would deal with breach inlet to 10th Avenue and along Ocean Boulevard, which are the installation of little parking nodes. So each of us left the initial meeting that day with an assignment for some data gathering, and then later in the day, we reassembled to talk through information we had gathered, which included things like information from engineering firms about what they thought it would cost to design them, information from engineering firms on what they thought it would cost to put the mini nodes in, information concerning actually metering the parking, information from the regulatory agencies that would be involved, which would include OCRM and South Carolina Department of Transportation. We then went away from that meeting and all had further assignments based on what we had talked about, and reconvened the following day to try to figure out what we could offer in terms of implementation based on the information that we had gathered. And so we have several options that we will be prepared to discuss in the Ways and Means Committee, and depending on what the committee decides relative to those options, then we will plug those things into the new draft of the budget for consideration in the June meeting.
Has there been anything else as far as other components of the proposed parking plan, example sticker system or whatever?
That's part of it.
That is part of it, okay.
As I understood the assignment, just to restate it, the assignment, and we, we relooked at it in the minutes to make sure that we had it right. The assignment was to implement the section of the plan that would call for sort of mini parking nodes along several of the 40 and 60-foot wide Beach Access Pass on Ocean Boulevard, and making it permit parking only, that residents and property owners would have permits in all other sections of the island in. No parking on the right of way except with, with a permit.
Okay.
So, yes, it does involve implementation of the permitting system. I hope we've covered all the steps, but we'll see when, when we all get together.
Great. Thank you.
I can assure you, they've been working diligently. And there are things that they uncover that we never think of, but you know, they close that loop and move on, so it's a, it's an intense effort, so very good. Any other questions? None heard. Let's go on to the bills already in your possession. And in your possession, you have, per second reading, ordinance 2011-04, an ordinance amending Title VII, licensing regulations, Chapter IV, regulations on alarm systems in businesses. I'm stopping in, in describing it because I think everybody knows where it is. Recommendation from staff is that we defer this back to the Public Safety Committee because we've had so much verbiage change since the last time they had seen it, that it would only be appropriate that the Safety Committee look at it one more time since we've had so much put and take on it. And, and so, I'm going to move that we defer this to the Public Safety Committee and bring it back to us hopefully next month.
Second.
Motion is seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Moving on. Second reading, ordinance 2011-5, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt the budget for City of Isle of Palms, South Carolina for fiscal year July 1st, 2011, ending June 30th, 2012. Once more, I'm going to make a motion that we defer this to June Council for the points that Linda has already elaborated on. We will have to have one more look at the detailed budget dealing with the activities from the parking. But, as she stated earlier in the public hearing, there should be no change to the general, general budget, general fund activities as a result of that. So, there should be no change in our millage rate or property tax issues. The proposal, depending on how we proceed, will mostly, well, will all be funded out of tourism-related funding activities. So, I'll make a motion, we defer that till next month.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Moving on. Okay. Second reading, ordinance 2011-6, an ordinance granting consent to application for video services and setting a franchise fee. This has to do with the discussion we just heard about from Jack, dealing with the, we can't call it AT&amp;T service because that's too encompassing. This is the video service application that they're looking for, dealing with the process and the information that they would be providing, basically internet service to your individual television sets. So, you have before you an ordinance 2011-6. I propose second reading and to suspend the reading. Any seconds?
Second.
Motion is seconded. I gotta keep everybody alert here.
Wake up, wake up down there.
Not deferring.
We're not deferring. This is live. This is an ordinance that grants them a franchise consent. It's a little confusing in this state because the Secretary of State grants the franchise, but it's all subject to our approval and conformance, and then we issue them the agreement, which involves establishing a franchise fee as well. So, there are a lot of parties involved in this whole thing, but our activity is before us tonight. So, you have before you a second reading of 2011-6. May I have a motion to approve?
You've got a motion and a second.
A motion and a second. All right, ahead of myself. All right, any other discussion?
I am going to vote against this, but not because I'm against the franchise. I'm against taxing the citizens the franchise fee of 5%.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I was looking at this. I don't know if this actually has the franchise.
It does.
It does.
The maximum franchise fee allowed is 5%. It's Section 2.
It's in here. Right here.
Okay, there. I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor? No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, we can sign that, send it back, and citizens can come enjoy. Introduction of new bills. Before you, you have a cleanup ordinance, 2011-7. It's not titled as cleanup. It's an ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter IV, Zoning, Article II, District Regulations, and Article VII, Signs of the City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinance to Delete. We love deletions. Deletion for any reference for multifamily residential districts. I'll ask Linda to explain why this is here.
Okay. This is actually something that we should have removed when we did the recodification. We no longer have a multifamily district, but in some of the other work that we have been doing and various other amendments to the code that alerted us, we saw the reference to the MF district or the multifamily district, and we just thought it important to go ahead and do the housekeeping to remove it now. If we had found it during recodification, we would have removed it at that time.
Okay. Simple housekeeping. Any, all in favor of moving this to second reading?
Aye.
I don't think there was a motion.
Motion.
I move we approve.
First reading?
First reading by title only, ordinance 2011-7.
Second.
Seconded. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. All right. Last item on our hit parade is another proclamation. I'll ask Linda to read the National Beach Safety Week proclamation.
Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Charleston represent a world of renowned recreational resources, and whereas Charlestonians and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas the City of Isle of Palms encourages its youth to develop strong swimming skills for safe enjoyment of the island's water resources, and whereas the city recognizes the community swim team, the Wild Dunes Dolphins, is celebrating 25 years of promoting a love and respect for the water by our youth, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, and whereas Charlestonians and visitors alike must remember to never swim alone, never drink alcohol before swimming, respect the power of the surf, and learn to swim. Therefore, I Dick Cronin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Isle of Palms, hereby proclaim May 23rd through 30th, 2011, as National Beach Safety Week in the City of Isle of Palms and urge all residents using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children, and furthermore, express the support for community swim teams and their mission to foster a love and respect for our water resources through swimming skills.
Very good. She did take a breath. All we want.
I saw it.
All right. I move for this proclamation.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. All right. Please swim safely. It's so very important to, we have so much water around us, and we have to encourage others to do the same, so. All right, our next meeting is set for June 26th.
Mr. Mayor? Miscellaneous, other items?
Oh, miscellaneous, yes, please.
I'd like to, I've, I've asked Linda to do some research as far as where we are as, you know, residents are right now, they're already seeing the build on the connector as trying to leave the island for work or for shopping or whatever, and it's going to be a challenge as more and more people move into the Low Country and take advantage of this wonderful place we call home. Traffic continues to build, so I asked Linda to get an update where we are with Charleston County as far as expanding the space from the connector to 17, and hopefully, this is a project that will have a high priority for the county. And Linda, could you give us an update, please?
Sure. For those that attended the public hearing on this, one of the things that we learned was that the funding had been approved for the design of the project. They still do have to secure the funding for actual implementation of the project, which would be the construction. So, that will, that is subject to County Council's allocation of that funding. I don't think they're anticipating any particular problem with it, but it is not in place at this time. Additionally, during the design phase, it was discovered that there are some complications related to some wetlands in the ditch system that runs alongside. I don't think that they feel like those are going to be permanent obstacles to implementing the project, but there's certainly activities that have to be considered. So, we, we may well be looking at a couple, this beach season and another beach season before we, we see some relief in terms of the exodus off the island with these improvements. But, those that are involved in it are working diligently in that regard, and we will track it and keep, keep proposing.
Very good. Well, thank you. It is something that is important to us, and that's why the county has addressed it at this stage. If I read the notes from them, you know, it's going to cost a couple million dollars just to make that interchange all the way down to 17, so hopefully, they can find the money and get the work done as quickly as possible.
Well, I think it's important for discussion to keep that up on their list of top priorities.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Any other items, miscellaneous?
One, one, one thing. I know we're all interested in the Sullivan's Island School, which is temporarily relocated to, to Mount Pleasant, the old White Size location. And, and there's been talk about what's going on in Sullivan's Island. Last week, at the Sullivan's Island Town Council meeting, they passed a resolution reaffirming support and commitment to the Charleston County School District to maintain the school on the island. They're working out some of the details with the, with county school folks, but be rest assured, we're looking forward to having Sullivan's Island School back on Sullivan's Island as a, a new and improved school.
Very good. Thanks for the update.
My question, do we need to also serve some type of support that serves Isle of Palms?
I think, I think we're good on Isle of Palms. We've sent something one time already.
Proclamation?
We did a proclamation.
There is actually a negotiation.
Yes.
Okay. No other?
Just one, one last thing. We won, we won.
Oh, yeah.
2011 American Shore and Beach Patrol Association's Best Restored Beaches. So, yay!
Here they come.
That might be right.
At that point, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
All right.
We're out of here. Thank you all for coming and enjoying it.
They're all coming.